In order, please. All rights.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dan, would you give your, please? Thank you. Okay, everybody saw the meeting minutes from the May 6th. Questions, concerns, comments, not big motion?
Motion to approve and suspend that reading.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. All favor of approving the May 6th meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approving the agenda, any changes, additions, corrections? Not, okay.
Motion to approve the agenda is...
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Thank you. Gary. 5A, Street Project. Sheriff?
Sir. Hey. You should have a seat if you like. You have a hot seat?
Shouldn't be.
I don't know much, sent the agenda before to you guys. I'll do better on getting that to you. Before, so it comes out for your regular agenda, but that was my fault. Street Project is kind of split into three areas, remaining work, warranty work, and then there's extra work. Same feel I talked about last time. We did meet with the contractor, go through his punch list of items to this point. More so courtesy than anything, we will do the final punch list when we do the substantial completion walk-through. But as a courtesy to him, you know, we want them to get everything they possibly can down when they're in town. So they did go through and do a ton of work. I am aware of some other things that have come up. So we'll try and work the contract to get those items added back to the punch list. John is in town Friday, that would date a little bit, and we're trying to just make sure things are getting checked off the list. As far as remaining work, it's mostly chip ceiling and pavement markings. That's work that we haven't already paid for, so just work within the contract that they haven't started. And then extra work, one thing we're still waiting on a quote from them before was some extra chip ceiling. Just a little different scope of work, it should cost about the same as regular chip ceiling, but anyways, it's a minor item. No invoices. I would say we're gonna probably approve an invoice with the contractor next month on this project. Get them paid, we're retaining a ton of money from Bayo right now, and if nothing else, we're gonna reduce their retainage down, just down closer to the amount of work that they have left. So I anticipate them asking for that. They haven't yet, but I'm sure, I'm certain that they will. Sanitary sewer issues on Fifth Street. Talked to John this morning, he helped order the manhole from Portera, so that local contractor, I believe the last meeting he had directed or approved that quote, it's for the installation. So the manhole will come, installation will be done, and we'll go from there. After that, I would recommend re-televising that line. We did talk about having AC sewer main pipe in town. It's not a good long-term solution, so once that manhole is done, then you can decide if you wanna do something with it or not. Most likely a cured and place liner. Maybe piggyback down to somebody else's contractor in their area, we can watch for that. We have cured and place lining going on. I anticipate someone Wilton, or no, excuse me, Wing, and then for sure Medina this summer, and then a big project in New England. So, one way or another, if you want to address that, I'm thinking that we might have an option there, but cross that rule later. Expedition Estates. You did get an email response from that company saying they're attempting, or going to be addressing some of the items, some of the problems. We sent a letter last August to one of the representatives, turns out that was a bad email address or bad mailing address. Said they didn't get that letter, but they're aware of the problems now and plan to address that stuff. So, the last meeting that I was here, you guys wanted a letter sent to them, giving 30 days. They're asking for another 30 days now, which I guess sounds like they're now working on those items as of last week when we got the email response. So if it's okay with you, I, I think we should allow them some, you know, another 30 days to get it done.
I have an issue with that.
Is that gonna work in, is that need for chip ceiling or something?
I hope so. I hope so. I don't know yet for sure. Ted doesn't, him give us the perfect schedule of what's gonna happen. I know they were thinking like July for the chip ceiling, so I hope so. But I guess I'd like to respond to them and tell them that the city, due to the circumstances, 30 days seems appropriate, or same recourse as before, or we'll address it and assess the cost to them.
I have no issue with that, unless it's different, okay?
Okay. That's really the end of my stuff, other than I know that the water department is, might as well some water tower inspection that we're just monitoring, but you know, will be happening this summer. I just repeat stuff on here, just as an active item, but I plan to stay, so other stuff comes up regarding anything else, I've got information. That's all that's on my agenda.
Thank you. 6A, Dog Park. Discussion, Dan. Come on up, your seat's still warm.
Alright, so I guess I'm representative for this.
I guess so.
We did have another discussion of dog parks last year and here. We did have some concerns, citizens in the North Star 2 area. Did some very thorough research that the person putting the dog park in probably should have done. And our board would tend to agree with their assessment that right by the baseball field is not best place or ideal baseball field for a dog park. Obviously Parks and Rec doesn't have much other open space property in town. So we were looking at other possibilities of locations for said dog park, and one of the areas we identified, I think is now up on the screen, just to the east of basically the bridge, as you go north on 27. The only, I guess neighbors currently are a dilapidated church and one, one house that would be directly across the street from that area. We are anticipating, I guess, that parking along the street will be adequate on that lot for, for the number of people we think will be at that dog park. And it doesn't infringe upon, I guess, other lots that are still for sale, remain available on the cul-de-sac there in North Star 1. Again, I don't think, my board is looking to scrap the, the Girls Cup project, just trying to find a better place that would suit that purpose, so. That was our discussion, thought process, or a little bit of spot where it could go. As far as the property itself, we're still willing to maintain the park once it's there, mowing, keep up with things. I'm still hoping to get the Girls Cup to commit to help a little bit since it's a Girls Cup park. And as far as possession, I have no interest in really owning any more property if I can offer, but multi-long-term lease for a little amount or or just a agreement of, of purpose for the area. Maintenance agreement between the Parks and Rec and the city would be adequate in my world as well.
Well, currently, that property is just, gets mowed and people use it to walk their dogs now, so I, I don't know what the, if I have a big issue with moving the dog park from that other area to over here. You can't build any structures or anything, so the power lines run through there. I don't think there's, is there a possible easement issue with putting a fence underneath those power lines, or I, I wouldn't imagine it would be?
There are fences of there, other areas where there's power lines.
True, true, true. So. Thoughts from the board, Casey?
So Dan.
So then are you talking about the whole, the whole then like lot, but?
Oh, and I don't, I'd have to go look at exactly how.
That's just, that, what's highlighted is Lot 1.
Right.
So, you know, if there's an agreement to just maintain it, it might be easier if we just say designated as Lot 1 is the area that they'll have to mow and maintain, even if the chain link fence only takes up a third of that area? That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, Dan.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
You know, then, wasn't that supposed to be like a nursery there?
The nursery is further over, to the east.
Wasn't that whole, that whole like area built? I know there's a board too.
Well, there, there was a, yeah, there was a plan at one time, about six years ago, to put a big arboretum with walking trails and, but the, the tree board became pretty much defunct and understood that it would take full-time job to even keep that beaded and cleaned and that. The plan's still sitting in the forester's office, but it's, it's scrapped.
If anybody wants to look at this wonderful piece of work that they put together, it does have a lot of good information, we certainly keep that copy.
What, were there any other suggestions of areas during your meeting, Dan, at all, or not really, or?
From our standpoint, we don't have a bunch of areas. There was brief discussion between myself and another, and a park board commissioner on kind of the area by the hockey rink where the horseshoe pits were, but again, it's just constant child movement. And then, based on one of the pictures in there, we didn't ask about the, the area east of the middle school, but again, I don't think that's the best spot, you know, Bismarck turn the softball complex, you and Dog Park right by Central High School. I don't think that would be a, and we did, again, there's a little discussion of looking at, and maybe if you could acquire a little bit of land from, in the north-east corner of the airport area, just, there's nothing ever gonna be there, but and it's so far in town, people aren't gonna drive along there to use it. Kind of eliminates the, the purpose of it.
Could you guys discuss how, here, I don't know how much of south of the new RV park you own, for sure?
So, oh, yeah, well. Now, usually run down. So, on the south side of the creek, there is, there's tree rose planet. This area in here where it's currently cultivated will be playground or a place, playground area here. And then to the east of the RV park, again, it's that wonderful scenario of if the tree rose there, we, we talked, community parking at one time for trucks and things, so not an ideal location either.
I agree that this, this spot here by the creek is more central. It's near walking paths and.
Which isn't necessarily ideal with parking the dog park, planning people, but still has the option, somebody who's out for a walk with their dogs, take them to the park.
What's the timeline, Dan? Has the Girls Cup group raised enough their funds to buy the fencing and all their signage and all that stuff yet?
Well, I was an engineer, I wouldn't think she has enough budget for fencing, anywhere near enough, but for her goal of fundraising, I think she's about halfway there, and she has two more fundraisers coming up in the near future, a 5K and something else. My understanding is she needs to complete her project prior to enrolling in, in college, so once she is on a college campus and a student there, then her window dies for her goal project. So, she's got until middle of August, basically, to get it done. Last I packed up her parents, she had what happened to money, she, of course, will raise.
Well, it'd be a little, just a little less mowing for our guys, and it wouldn't be in the way of where we dump snow.
Well, I was just gonna ask, that'll be areas empty, if we do haul or dump snow in winter, kind of over in that area.
So, kind of where the, the creek bows to the north there a little bit, there's that bright green line that goes to the south. We didn't go any further west of that line this much, or we dumped snow. We were all east of that.
Avoid any water and sewer lines, but she stays off of those just in case something happens. Maybe even that tree would be getting come to the park, so.
Dave, you see any other issues over there?
Before building a fence, just wanna make sure that we're not, you know, floodway, that location there. So one of these floodplain development permits should come into the city, just to make sure. I will pass this on, this real lady's doing a project.
Pat, do you see anything with this location that?
So you're proposing we allow them just to use it, or have them lease it? Cause what if she decides, I can't get this done? And now they've leased it, do they have to keep it up, the park board, or?
No, they're not gonna put anything there or do anything.
So it all continues, it's gonna ride on, if she gets the money, then we'll lease it to them, then she can put a dog park in?
I'm assuming that's when the park board had come with the proposal to us to.
She's got a small window, and you guys don't meet every week, and we don't meet every week, and we have to wait for a meeting to get all this going, so you know, is she gonna run out of time or?
I would, I would say we could approve a contingent on if they move forward on doing their project. I don't see us needing to wait on, on doing it.
Well, I suggest you all have a joint powers agreement, you know, to raise these, and then try and put us one there. So we, who all is who.
Exactly.
Or we can leave it in the air like some other parks.
Does this, do we need to let the area North Star 1 people know that live in that area that there can be a proposed dog park there? They may not like that idea as well.
Well, I think initially, when, when this gal was looking at doing this, I, that was their first idea. In that, yeah, Dorian somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, she was farther to the east, I guess it would be 900 down there, where the tree current nursery sits.
You know, I guess, reading in that, in that, I guess, like packet, that's, I guess, like talk about giving, I guess, you know, I guess, like neighbors to have a sign off on.
I would 100% agree, and I guess my stance is gonna be that Parks and Rec is not building a dog park. And that the individual who is doing this for a very prestigious award, it makes a great deal of difference in your future moving forward, should take that, the lead to gain access from the people that she needs to.
Would you guys just require basically signatures or take petition around that neighborhood before you allow her to do it, or what are you thinking, Dan?
I have no idea, once, once again, Parks and Rec is gonna maintain this park. That's kind of the extent to which I'm willing to be involved in, in her project.
Well, normally, if it's within your permitted zoning uses of the area, you don't need people to sign off. If that's all there is, just a use, but that's permitted, so.
To understand is, but nobody in North Star would have to, she wouldn't have to get a petition, petition for people to sign, okay, if you will?
No, but, but if they read the paper and see there's a statute, they may come to the park board and say, we're gonna be.
Well, they'd come to the city, rather than the park board, and they'd say, here, that's your zoning. If they can find something to justify their position in zoning rights, then they'd be.
Right, but we're here tonight, Dan's here tonight because citizen came with this and said, I don't want it in my backyard. So that's why we're looking at a new, new location.
Like I say, you, you've already zoned areas, and whatever fits within your zoning.
Sure.
That's allowed.
What is this zoning, Marty?
Green is R1.
So presidential?
Well, you probably have to have Sean take a look, and make sure it fits.
Okay. We'll do that.
What is, Marty, what is that area that was first proposed?
Recreation.
That is proposed recreation?
Yeah, that's a recreation also.
Even though it's, this is R1, you can't build houses in that location. So I'm not sure if that's, that matters or not, but.
Depending if.
If you can pass a motion saying, you know, if it's, as long as it's purged by the, the inspector, it goes in conditions and sort of.
Okay. Here, well, Sean, look at the zoning, it looks like it's R1, so.
And up the top of my head, I don't know what uses and what conditional uses are being in R1, so take a look at that.
Yeah.
Or else it could be zoned, or it could be zoned.
So if there isn't an issue with the zoning, does anybody have, is anybody opposed to having this over there in that location?
I am opposed to having a dog park anywhere, cause I don't think it will be used, I think that people, people aren't gonna use it. I don't, I don't think that is where you put it, I don't think people are gonna use it. I'm not a dog owner, but I'm just opposed to the idea in general.
Okay.
So.
Gotcha. Alright, well, then we'll see what the restrictions are on R1, if this is gonna be put there. If it is an issue, then we can, next me, talk about either rezoning it or making a motion just to approve the use of it. Move from there.
That's good to me.
Okay.
Anybody want this? Add it to my file?
You can have it.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for Dan? Or messages to send with him? Perfect. Thanks, Dan. Alright, 8A, site authorization for gaming, for Asian sports, Jimmy's, Ox's Long Shots.
It's been a whole year already, can you believe it?
Time flies.
I think we're all getting old or something. Anyway, yeah, Asian Sports has signed rental agreements with Ox's Long Shots and Jimmy's to continue conducting our games of chance for the next year. The gaming license here runs from July 1st through June 30th, so I can end your name.
Alright. Sounds good.
Any questions?
No, we need to make a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over in our.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Take that, I'll get the sign.
Marty for me?
You bet.
And Marty, I'll stop, I'm the dear to the big one. Thank you, everybody, see you the year.
Thank you. Alright, 8B, annexation discussion. Alright, so Pat's got all the answers for us on annexation discussion. So, the other day when Pat and I were talking, we, and Marty, and I think, before we go forward, I think we just need to just have more discussion about areas, reasons why, what services are being provided. You know, question in my mind is still how a special assessment is set, and we have a district including people that have certain services and some don't have services, how you, how you change or prorate the, the specials, and maybe that's just up to the board, and that's the annexation or the, the special assessment board, that's their problem, not ours, I don't know. But, I think those are things that you mentioned, Pat, and that's, that we should discuss. Wanna kind of lead us through your thoughts here, Pat, please?
Well, really, I, in my opinion, what you need to decide is what you wanna bring within the city limits. That's currently outside of our designated boundaries, and we have some kind of weird boundaries of our city limits. The issue of specials is not a concern to me, because since they're not in the city right now, they're not subject to special assessments, and they won't be, because we've already decided those districts, we've already determined what the boundaries are of the special assessment district. So this would be for the future. And at that point, then you would be able to special assess those districts. The, I guess what you guys are looking at, you know, there may be a small amount of tax revenue, I don't expect it's gonna be a you're not gonna get a windfall from whatever you annex. Your costs for annexing depends on whether they voluntarily annex, wherever you decide to annex, or if they choose to object to the annexation, that will, you know, make a difference in terms of city costs. So other than that, I mean, you're not required, just because you annex an area, this way you're required to provide them any other city services that you already provide. You're not required to provide them water or sewer, that's all, that's all your decisions to make, or if they wanna.
So if we, if we annex the land south of the railroad tracks on Glacier Drive, and, and they're being taxed like everybody else is in town, but they don't have paved roads?
Yep.
Would?
You're not required to.
Not required.
Have paved roads.
No, they could petition.
If they wanna pay for them, yeah, they, they could do it like everybody else in town.
Sure. Do we do snow removal on Glacier?
Yes. After we lay that, if it gets money, you're rubbing it up when you play snow after the winter.
Yeah. So they're receiving those services and lease?
And the city does not have to do that.
Okay.
That's your choice, so.
Sure. Okay. And they would receive fire services from us either way, if they're rural or local, or doesn't matter. But there's no fire hydrants down there, that's southwest water.
Fire, park, services. I don't know what else.
Garbage, I suppose, yeah.
You're already on a garbage.
Garbage, yeah, you know, but as Pat was probably saying, you'll probably have to go outside of town, you know, to get others' garbage, but, yeah.
So, are you saying, Pat, if we're gonna go through a process of annexation, if it's the land where Meisner's at, or if it's across the highway where Gowan is building, that we should probably look at Glacier Drive? Glacier Drive and
Well.
Um, the crossroad tracks where the storage units are at. The Miller property.
I guess, yeah, I guess what I was suggesting was that you look at all your options. If you're going to annex, um, that's a few you can do individually to kind of cut down on opportunities for an opt-out type of vote. But if you want to do them together to try to save some transactional costs. Then you can look at all those different areas that you're considering. If you think that's going to create more issues, then you probably want to do them separately. And even though the transactional costs might be a little bit higher, the opportunities for actually getting it annexed would be greater.
Yeah. Have, did Shannon talk to Josh Meiser about him proposing, asking for annexation, or?
I don't know if she talked to him about the annexation, but and she hasn't heard back as far as costs for Southwest Water.
Yeah. I know Josh mentioned to us a couple times that he would mind if he's annexed, but if he would, if he was the one to initiate that, that'd be an easier situation if he initiated than if we.
Yeah. And we discussed that, and the only issue there was the land south of McCrick. That was already separated out, that he doesn't own anymore. Then you've got that little slipper south of the creek that's.
You know, there's one, one note that I seen too. It was, you know, on Vegas. On Vegas, Vegas, Vegas census, I guess, you know, that would then uphold the town and bring in, bring in extra, extra than money too, if we got those people south of real.
On Glacier, yeah. Yeah, that would be. That would add that.
You know, I guess, I would like to see a map. You know, I know I've seen, you know, a few of them, and they don't seem to match up exactly, you know.
Can we get that thing?
Okay. Dan, well.
I'll get the map a lot of them.
So question, if they, so if you want to do, you're going to list Meisner's and the properties, probably those little pieces. If they decide to opt out. What district? Because don't, because we made districts before that Sunflower couldn't opt out because that district was the whole city.
Because that was for a special assessment.
Right, so if he wanted to opt out of annexation, how many, how many people would he need to, because wouldn't we all have to?
Josh, fifty point one percent of the property.
Josh with control.
Control.
He has way more land than.
Than all those little offices.
Okay. Oh, oh, just those people would have to.
Of the property.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fifty point zero zero one percent of the property would have to.
Okay.
So Josh would. I feel like.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we do have a couple resolutions here, and I'm assuming that we probably want to table these.
Yes.
And have some more discussion, get the map, but Casey's asking what Monty brought in for us, and just kind of consider their options and how to weigh this out, and in the meantime, hopefully we can figure out with Josh if he would ask for the happen, or how, that would be easier.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, what, I mean, if we decide to do after a little map and set this these individuals south of the tracks, and I mean, if they're getting services for how many years, what kind of negative feedback? Or repercussion are we going to see as well?
Well, they, am I right by saying, Monty, that they, they pay taxes already, but the taxes go to the county?
Correct.
So those taxes would just be diverted to the city?
School, no, they'd still have the county tax, and just add the city and private district levy to their county and school tax.
Yeah, obviously, nobody wants to have extra put on them, but I guess the argument could be that why wouldn't they pay the same thing that Danny Nelson, or Mr. Nelson's paying, that lives a hundred yards away from the cross railroad tracks?
Correct.
Other than he's got a paved road that he pays for. You know, I guess they get water, or not water, but fire, police, they use our, they use the rest of our community to access their property, because kids get to use our playgrounds. Have access to everything else, so, you know, swim pool. Now, they, they're not in the city, they're not paying sunset the tax on that, so, I guess there's.
Pool has fees for it.
Pool does have fees for everybody.
We actually went down this road once before during my time here, when, uh, the railroad was banned, but that went up to the old Glen Arrow line. And we decided, it was never in city limits, and we annexed it, and it was contested. And so we did go through a procedure with, uh, an administrative law judge, uh, actually from the state. Of course, they heard they were in the middle of West Hazen, so they didn't really have a whole lot of factual information that would support their case, but so we were successful in making that one, but you know, it was a similar deal to some of these other areas that get all the same services and, like. There's a list of things that you go through to determine, uh, what's permissible for annexing.
Sure. Not to cloud the waters, but since Glacier Drive is all provided with water by Southwest Water. If we annexed them into the community, we wouldn't ask them to disconnect, would we? Because then we'd have huge fees to pay. So we would just leave that alone.
Well, that's up to you, folks, um.
We, we could choose to leave it alone and let them continue to be served by Southwest.
I think it's to your advantage, but that's up to you.
Yes.
Yeah. But again, any annexation is going to require that agreement with Southwest Water for both service and disconnects, so.
Yeah. Okay. Before we move on, any more discussion or comments? Okay. All right. Reports. Streets. Cemetery.
Uh, I have nothing to start.
Thank you.
What's that?
Thank you.
Nine A, water sewer.
Oh, anything you like.
I knew he was going to jump back.
I, I was just, I didn't even look at it real close, I assumed A was me still, and that's, you moved it in, but good, good. That should be.
I was surprised that I had to go first.
Uh, finance, busing.
Oh, the only thing I have is I noticed on Facebook that the busing does have a schedule for when they will be traveling out of town this summer. So, or in town, so with the music in the park and everything, so. Look at that and utilize them. That would be it.
Okay. Anything on the police, Monty?
No, Casey's stuff will be up later.
Okay. Forestry, I know Mike hasn't really gotten to do a whole lot of forestry, he's been pretty busy with other things, and that fits. Uh, he did do, had some summer help, did some trimming around some of the poles, correct, that he has hung banners on, yeah. H C D.
Nothing.
Great. And under mine, I just want to, a couple things I want to mention. This came up a couple meetings ago, about the corner here on Fourth and Main Street where it curves at the end of the park and goes up towards Senex. And we talked about putting a yield sign in heading from west to east at the end of the park. I don't know, talking, what's that? No, we're not, I, I don't want, I don't want a stop sign there. I don't want this room filled with people. I guess our, in our minutes, we talked about putting a yield sign there. But it's not really conducive for a, a yield sign, and that sits on that spot. You know, we did have a, a near miss there with a truck, it sounds like, that had locked up his brakes, who was going to head south, cross the tracks. And I just, I, I told Jared today when I visited with him, that I, I would like to look at that situation a little bit closer, uh, see what we can do. Short of reconstructing that corner, which would cost a lot of money, which we don't want to do. The other thought I had is coming down fourth. And maybe it'd be just in the yard there, uh.
Matthews.
Yes, Matthews yard there. Maybe having a flashing sign there with a speed limit, you know, the speed limit on that corner is fifteen. And I don't know if people realize that. I'll, but I, I'll bet we don't have one ticket on our books that someone got pulled over for going over fifteen miles an hour on that curve.
Which means fifteen from just east of the library and almost all the way up to Senex, because there's never a sign saying to change this path.
The sign doesn't have its speed limit, or is it on those?
No, it's a, it's a white speed mark.
There's a sign there.
It's a white speed limit sign.
Oh, it is.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, well, because we've had some issues with that, we have to correct.
I, is there a fifteen mile an hour sign here? Um, uh, there's.
Yeah, just east of the line.
So, and maybe it's an enforcement issue, maybe we need to, um, I, I'm not sure what we need to do, but um, I would, if we could slow down on traffic, if people were doing fifteen miles an hour coming both directions, it'd be a lot easier to make a judgment call to slow down or stop, and it is a bull, bull directions are coming at twenty to twenty-five. I think people slow down there. But to fifteen, I don't think that happens. I'm not sure what you guys' thoughts are, but, uh, it's, yeah, it's maybe you. Uh, so I just wanted to put on there, just, just for a discussion point again tonight, to raise, raise the awareness, and have Jared look at it again. I believe that the way the road is, it debut in our time of one day, it fourth isn't supposed to.
Fourth is the through street.
Fourth is the through.
Main Street is turning on to fourth, it's actually technically a key intersection.
So Main Street should yield to that. I, I think, if we had an accident there, I don't know what the judgment would be for who's, who's liable or who's responsible.
It's actually a section line. It's never been closed. It's what continues on to the park. And actually crosses the Riverside Park. It's never been closed.
It's a section.
How do we close it?
I think you have to petition the county.
Well.
And I think the only way you're going to get traffic to slow down, because you can have all the signs you want, but if you have a stop sign there, which I don't like stop signs either, but that's the only way it's going to slow down, is if you have a stop sign going that way.
And the stop sign would almost have to be right at the corner of Matthews before that other before first, no. What is the road that runs east and west there, third, yeah.
Yes, you're starting a stop sign.
I'm talking a stop sign going.
Starting from the.
From Main Street.
Oh, you're talking about the stop sign heading, heading east.
I mean, that's the only way you're going to stop.
Because what's the street out there?
They have a stop sign coming out.
There's.
There, there's a stop sign at the end of third, right?
Yes.
I love that, I'm in favor of a stop sign.
You know, in the spring, there is a ton of anhydrous traffic down there. Maybe it'd be best to make the anhydrous traffic stop on fourth, coming down from the north before they head across there. And slow that traffic down.
I can tell you, anhydrous, they're going slower than.
Not that, not that anhydrous semi, that locked up his brakes, so we.
A semi, but the farmers are moving slower than our other traffic, but yeah, it's that's the only way you're going to get to slow down, because you can put up all the fifteen mile an hour speed limit signs you want, unless there's a cop there.
I agree.
People are going to slow down.
Only issue there is then they are not required to stop at the next spot, you know, it's only another seventy-five feet. So if they think they've got the right of way, and all of a sudden somebody comes from that side, what have you done?
Yeah.
It's, it's far from a perfect intersection.
Exactly.
If you're.
I don't like the idea of having a yield sign next to the stop signs, that, that's confusing. There's, there's two ways to do it to an engineering standpoint, we can do a traffic study. My company doesn't do that, we work with some little specialty companies that do do that. They might recommend reconstruction of that intersection, you know, to get away from the four pronged intersection there, or they could recommend turning some things into one ways, or they might recommend a roundabout, or they might recommend a signalized intersection, so the traffic study is one way to go. Or you could try something, you know, if you wanted to not deal with the cost of reconstruction of that intersection. Most likely, and unfortunately, unfortunately, it'd probably be what you probably don't want.
Sure.
Stop sign I made, and then make the north-south road the through street.
So it only, with, it will be a one-way stop, you don't want to be stopping on heading that direction.
From west to east.
From west to east.
Yeah.
And to me, that's the only way you're going to slow that traffic down.
Okay, well, something to think about. I don't know, traffic studies a thing or not, but what would something like that cost, any idea?
We just did one, um, did a new colors in Minot, so someone's, it's like eight thousand bucks for that one. That's just off Broadway in Minot. Eighty-one hundred bucks or something, they bring the, they do the counts, the traffic counts for a certain amount of time, and they recommend you know, closures, but.
Yeah.
What are those stop signs cost there? That the maybe they make so that.
The one that by the school was like twenty-four hundred bucks, I want to say fifteen hundred.
Say fifteen hundred.
And that would, if we put something in stop center, I'd want to do something like that too, that's.
Well, that, at least the yellow beacon a hundred feet ahead saying stop there.
Okay. All right, so it's something to think about. Next thing on my, my list, I have, uh, Monty and I were starting, we're looking at a couple ordinances changed with drones. Pat's taken a look at it too, I've also got a copy of Myron Stern and Steve Frobarf and the Police Department. I think it's going to become a bigger issue as we, as we go on time, more and more usage of it, more and more people are going to use it as hobbies for businesses, for things they shouldn't use them for probably. And I think it's time that we get something on our books. Uh, we've looked at a couple from other communities, a couple from, or one from the state, and Monty's kind of just playing with it right now, but at the next meeting, we should have something to, to start at, the starting point to look at, but if you have any thoughts, stop in his office, take a look what he's got right now.
I'll send that.
Yeah, he doesn't want you in his office, he'll send it out.
Let's start with a, like.
Ten A, proposal for property removal on the night trailer on ten twenty-five First Avenue of Terry Falsing, twenty-three hundred dollars and. Twenty-three fifty actually to remove that, to put tires underneath it and a trailer tongue. And haul it out, and the city would still have to clean up the rest of the mess, the shed and garbage around it. I think twenty-three hundred is excessive myself.
But you can special sense that.
Yeah.
Against property, sure it'll be a leave against property.
Okay. Which will never see.
And how bad would that street get?
I don't think the street would get torn up. Yeah?
Based off of how he moved the other trailer from one end to the other with a tractor, I don't know, I don't know. Jared, do you think Chip Seeling, he comes in with a non-semi trailer puller? Tear through that, I don't know, I know it. I, I'm a jury, I, I just.
Well, if we don't have him do it, then it's our guys doing it, and that, you know, do we have the right equipment to do it? Can we do it with our feed loader and just crush it down like a tin can and fold it up and?
That'd be tough. That would be tough. We don't have anything to look on to it to pull it.
And how far are we hauling yet?
We, we wouldn't be, he'd take the last go.
He'd take it a lot, we'd take it two miles. If he does it and gets it out on the highway and it falls apart and makes a big mess in the ditch and it's on, the liability is on him. To clean up, we look on the cars and get just on twenty-seven, if this thing comes apart, we got a heck of a mess to clean up.
Will the liability still be on him if it falls apart before he gets out of the car?
Yeah, we're hired to do the job.
At that point, I don't think twenty-three fifty is that excessive.
That's, that's a lot of work, Jack, a lot of getting wheels on, get all the locking on from under it and getting it hooked on, hitch on, get it pulled out from the street.
Yeah.
That thing is long, I don't know if I'd wanna ride the outfit to be pulling it.
Okay, is that a motion Nancy?
Sure.
Accept that, okay, we have a motion by Wolf to accept the falsing bid of two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Second, second by Stern, special.
I would ask that we have somebody follow him to make sure if any parts fall off.
Yeah.
I'd probably have Dave kind of.
Somebody to make sure he does clean it back for himself.
Thank you. So then I guess we don't have to pay. Pay the, I guess, landfill thieves in, right?
They're covered in.
But we still have to.
We have to remove the sheds, the skirting removed by the city and allow it to be cleaned up by the city.
And then we have to cap, cap the water and. Because there's water line there, I'm assuming to the trailer.
Climb a curb stop. Should have curb stops.
Do we have to get that porch off the side away from the trailer before?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can have to remove the trailer, we'd have to get that off of there, but that's pretty easy to get that porch, that small, we'll have to way off of there, we can handle that.
You could probably take your payload. Casey, don't you guys, the fire department doesn't want that, do some kind of training and. Self-achieve. We have a motion and we have a second, any more discussion?
If we're gonna demo the, I don't know, I'm, I'm kinda torn. I know we don't have the correct equipment, but we gotta climb, can't we just go in there and just start chopping away at that thing and get it out of the frame?
Monty's kinda watched me loading that scrap and I love that, and a clam bucket is way different than adventures like Tim Shores has on this track over, you can actually grab them like. You really can't.
So anything above the frame, we have trouble with?
Climbing that off of there, yeah. And getting it squashed small enough to put in our curb truck, how many trips are we gonna have to make, I mean, you can't squish that.
You know, I guess on our, on our, I guess, like rates. You know, I know I haven't seen them for a while, but I think our rates were what, like a hundred and a quarter or something like that per hour, per hour, so I mean, you know.
You could be spending way more time with it.
Yeah.
You start, to me, you start climbing and pulling that thing apart and all of, you know, any kind of window and insulation inside them holes and it starts blowing. I mean, to get that picked up as you're pulling that thing apart would be.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Yeah. Over and out.
Hi. Eleven A, garbage truck bids. See, you have it on here. Yeah, this is to put out notice that we'll receive bids. And Monty's got stuff in hand.
First one was Nelson International. Bid of Nelson International Truck Chassis, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Optional item, a spring suspension, eleven fifty, or one thousand, one hundred and fifty, excuse me. The Garbage Refuge Body and Packer, ninety-one thousand, fifty dollars. Optional items, twenty-seven forty-five, they're not listed specifically. For a base bid of one hundred eighty thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars. Less trade-in of our Packer, six thousand dollars for a total bid, one hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
And what was the, oh, that's in international, sorry.
Yeah.
The, Monty, the eleven fifty, that was, you said that was optional springs, kind of your, your spring.
Optional spring suspension.
Maybe spring suspension instead of air bike.
We have two bids from Wesley Crossroads. First one, truck chassis. For a Freightliner chassis. Truck chassis, ninety-one thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars. Optional items listed separately, two thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars. Garbage Refuge Body of Packer, ninety-one thousand, fifty dollars. Additional optional items, two thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars. Base bid, one hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. Trade-in, six thousand dollars. Total bid, one seventy-seven, nine seventy-five, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five. The second bid from Wesley Cross, Wesley Crossroads. In the Freightliner chassis, truck chassis, ninety-two thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars. Optional items, six hundred dollars. Garbage Refuge Body of Packer, ninety-one thousand, fifty dollars. Optional items, two thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars. Base bid, one hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Less trade-in, six thousand dollars. For a total bid of one hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars.
Maybe it'll list the options.
Not specifically on the bid sheet, that does have separate sheets for the exceptions. Let me see, there's a page of exceptions here, engine, three hundred and fifty horsepower with turbo, thousand foot pounds torque. For an excellent suspension, twenty thousand, we have an eighteen thousand suspension in actual. That they spec for other departments, air ride suspension, and then different front and rear tires are some of their exceptions.
What's the truck manufacturer?
This is a Freightliner, that's.
That's it?
That's it. Those are the bids for the truck.
The first one's an international chassis.
Yeah.
Yes.
So Dave, these are pretty much equal here. You want to review these and look at all the options?
Yeah, I'd like to review some, see what some of their options are.
Okay. Horsepower, that.
Yeah, see how they.
What kind of engines they have, whatnot, yeah, all right. So you, Mr. Freyler, look over those and let us know. Okay. Thank you, Monty. Propane bids.
Propane bid. Federal Oil Company Hazen, the following is a propane bid for the City of Hazen for June first, two thousand nineteen through May thirty-first, twenty twenty. Seventy-nine cents per gallon. Seventy-nine cents per gallon. Propane bid from Farmers Union Oil Company. I'd like to submit the following bid for your consideration, propane, eighty-nine cents per gallon. And those were the only two received.
Is that eighty-nine cents, do we, do we get our patronage?
Yes.
Back on that?
Yes.
Is that something we try to calculate into this? Formula or? Yeah, I don't think it'd be, uh. Enough that much back, I mean, I'm just gonna go out in a couple. Couple cents, you know. Okay.
Who had the bids on the last year project?
Sad, I'm sorry.
Who had the bid last year?
Sad.
What, do you know what that bid again was?
Let's say it was eighty-two. And I'll call.
Ten cent difference. Want to accept one of these, made a motion.
I make a motion to accept the Federal Oil.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Ha.
Hi.
Over and out.
Hi. Motion carried. Okay, finally we got Casey on the, on the list. Fire hall, windows replacement repair estimates, what do we know, Casey?
All right, did some checking on windows, uh, hey, Dan, Bill are up there, we went through a look at windows, I don't know if you guys have ever looked at the windows up there. We're trying to keep our heating and electricity bill on a little bit up there, just a little bit unreal. Um, anyway, I got two quotes back, uh, one came from Western Steel. And there were seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars to replace five of the six windows and not change out any of the trim or any of the extension jams inside. Which we determined were pretty rough after looking at them. Then went to Headline Gang, come up and look at it, they do a lot of business in area. For a three pane. Window. They'll change all the windows out, all oak trim, all oak extension jams, so they're doing six windows instead of five. They are seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, or three dollars cheaper than. Western Steel, but they're doing an extra window plus all oak trim, all new extension jams. Both windows are lifetime warranty, they're triple pane, non-sliding window, that way there's nothing to fail.
Both, both Western Steel and?
Western Steel's are just a double pane.
Okay.
So I guess kind of what, uh, with talking with Dan and talking with Monty, I mean, the biggest thing is we do not have seventy, a hundred dollars in our building repair.
Yeah, for either bid, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have that kind of money, no matter what, um, we normally probably get four thousand dollars a year. We spent around twenty-one hundred dollars at the door, which is just replaced, so we should be getting that bill soon. So, we probably have somewhere maybe close to seventeen hundred bucks up in our building repair budget, right in that range, I think, I mean, this is until we get the bill in, we don't know. Monty had looked at a few different areas, I think we can take a little bit of money out of. Came up with three different places we might go borrow some money from. One is our operation and maintenance. We're at four percent of the budget right now for the year, is it? So, um. Six thousand dollar budget. I don't know, Monty, I was thinking we could maybe take a thousand from there. You think that'd be okay? I, I think it should be. Another one was our small equipment and other parts, we're sitting at twelve percent of that, we're normally. Well, anywhere from three to six thousand dollars left in that line item at the end of the year for the last three years, that's a seven thousand dollar budget. So same thing, taking a thousand out of there. Then we have a miscellaneous budget of a thousand dollars, which from the looks of it, we usually use. We've used a hundred bucks one year and thirty-three dollars another year and nothing the other years. So, so we could probably come up with about forty-five hundred of it from pulling out of some of the other areas.
Is this something we'll give you some sales tax dollars for, you think, or?
We do have. This, the general fund, government buildings and repairs. We budgeted tw- twenty-seven thousand, so far we've spent four hundred dollars out of the city general fund budget, and generally this one. With the exception of when we did a lot of the work in the park and stuff, that, and that was just run through the majority of it. So there would be funding there, I forgot to ask Casey, is the rural willing to put anything in on this, but since it's our building, or?
I haven't talked to him, but the rural's usually really good at willing to put in anything on, on almost everything, so, I mean, I could talk with them about it. Actually have a meeting with them, board meeting here at the end of this month.
Okay. Why don't you visit them and see if we can get creative and find some spots? Why don't you visit them and see if we can get creative and find some spots? I think it's a worthy investment. I know you guys, uh, beating a much, outrageous, some efficiencies like windows, doors help quite a bit, but, I think we'll just try to figure out something, but don't know exactly where, but, it's something that needs to be done. We're gonna put them in, in the, in that for quite a while.
What are those thirty day quotes?
Um, yes, the thirty day quotes, uh, but speaking of them at Langang, you know, they knew I had to come to some commission meetings and talk about that, but the biggest thing is they want, they need an answer back to get us on their calendar, so we can guarantee having it done before winter. They're about two months out with minimum right now.
And I know Matt's guys are pretty busy too.
Yeah.
And I'll, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'll say I'd rather stay in town with our business, um, it's, this is what I feel, so, you know, Casey. How much are the, I guess, heating bills?
Okay, this one's easy, we, our electricity and heat, we're, we're budgeted thirteen thousand per year. We are currently at twelve thousand five seventy-four spent per year. We as a department, part of that is lights, we had high Christmas lighting lights, we just put a little over five thousand dollars into the building, all new lights, which we put in to try to help bring that down. You know, had a door on the north side, you can see daylight under, just got that replaced, that was a little over twenty-one hundred bucks. But, I mean, this is all savings I, I see in the long, long run. You come up through the hall and, and look, you can see daylight out around some of the windows. And I, I agree with Jerry, I, I'd like to keep it in town too, but, when you, you ask for a bid for everything, you tell them what they want, oh, we don't need to replace this, we don't need to replace that, this is fine. Been on the apartment for fifteen years and windows ain't fine, Dave knows it too, where you have water running in them, it's a forty-year-old building.
I think it's every two years, about those, about their windows.
You know, and I guess we're, we're fine with going anyway with it, but, bang for your buck, you're getting more out of Langang is the biggest reason, only reason we've been talking with them is the installers are local people. They're always in the area, uh, so it's a reason we check with them.
I'm, I'm glad you did. Okay, well, well, this is more talking and try to figure something out and, you know, visit the rural, that'd be good.
Yeah, I can visit the rural. And I've got one more thing also.
Absolutely.
Talked to Monty a little bit about it, Dave, but, uh, north side of our fire hall, there's that grass parking, or grass lot up there. Anytime we have fires, anything going on, we have nowhere to park. Movie theaters talked to us numerous times about not parking in their lot. Or if there's a movie going on and we end up with a fire, the roads are completely filled up. Absolutely nowhere, worst possible. So, talking with Dave, just kinda looking at if we could possibly strip some sod off of there and bring in some fresh asphalt and create a parking spot for us. Now that we have a good door in the north side of the building, we have a place we can park, we can get into the building from the north side. And keep the traffic off the roads or sitting in the middle of the roads, I mean, we have vehicles, we had them sitting down the center of the road out in front of the hall before. There's nowhere to put vehicles. But, you know, we're sitting with thirty-five members, we have a big call where you put, even have twenty people stuck, where do you put twenty vehicles? East side of the hall, we have room for about six vehicles, seven vehicles. Like Dave and I were talking, you know, we've got, uh, quite a few people in our department that are, equipment operators, that kind of stuff, to mines, you know, I don't know if it's a feasible thing, but I know, a lot of our people are willing to donate their time, if we, I mean, the big thing is we need equipment. We could strip that stuff off and help out, get some crushed asphalt pulled in, get the spread back over.
Thoughts, Casey, Ted, Brady?
I would like to see you off the streets, cause I do live there. And when you come up the street on, on Sixth Avenue and you wanna drive anywhere, you can't see. And I know they have to park there, cause there must get fire, but yeah, it would be nice. If you could park on that grass.
Projects like this is what that piles for.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
It'll give us a good training pad too, when we do our extrication training and stuff, instead of cutting cars apart in the grass, you have a nice gravel, area to, to work on these cars for our classes.
We kinda did a rough figure, we're gonna go by measure, but with, Monty was playing around on the computer earlier today, we came up with somewhere around seventeen thousand square feet of, which would be in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty yards. Uh, if we want four inches thick with it. You know, we could give or take a little bit on that, but.
The equipment aspect though, you need to talk to Dave. Work with him with that situation there, but.
How far are you thinking about going north?
That's still kind of where we're. Yeah, you know, like Dave just said, when, when we do training, we put vehicles back there, whatever. The farther north we went, the better it'd be, you know, if we had a crushed asphalt pad to work on, instead of in, grass and sod, I mean, that would make it a lot better.
Did we, did you put snow back this, this winter?
Yeah.
We'd have to probably minimize that a little bit less than, which we've got, I mean, most of the middle school, we've got tons of them there. Thinking it doesn't get soft.
No, I think that's it. Good project, I have no opposition to that.
Don't either.
Work with Dave on it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, but I'll talk to the rural board, it's in June is my meeting.
Okay.
And I'll get back to you if, if they help.
Alright, perfect, thanks. Alright, uh, twelve, we have to get our new business. Approve of the bills. Good night.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf to approve the bills. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Kat.
Kat. Over and out.
Hi, motion carried. Freightliner or international? Oh, me and Jerry, sorry.